I'd like to call to order the Board of Trust, Library Trustees Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, and it is 6:31. Our Secretary Pro Tem will now, our Vice President, will call our roll call, please.
Certainly. Trustee Cox?
Here.
Trustee Di Lorenzo is on her way. Trustee Nealon?
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe is here. Trustee Senate?
Here.
Trustee Summer?
Here.
And Trustee Fishman?
Here. Thank you. It's now time for our public comment. And any attendees who have signed our visitor public comment registration form and who wish to address the Board of Trustees, the Wommet Public Library Board of Trustees, may do so now. And I believe we have one person who is coming up, come up to the microphone, please. And please state your name.
Thank you. I'm Monica O'Connor. I'm an Assistant Scout Master with Troop Five, and I wanted to say thank you for your service. We appreciate it. I'm here to talk to you about a blood drive. Declan O'Connor, who's my son, this is his Eagle Scout project, and he's doing it with University Blood Center of Illinois. It's being hosted at the First Presbyterian Church in Wommet this Sunday from 9:00 AM till 1:00 PM. I don't know if you know, but we are in desperate need of blood in Illinois. We have a great shortage. So one pint of blood can save three lives. That's a lot, and it's wonderful. But it is much needed, and we're in dire situation. So have any of you ever donated blood? Well, now's your chance. So please join us. I will put flyers over there if you would like to sign up. You just do the scan code. And I want to thank you very much for your time and for your service. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you, Monica. I hope you have a great turnout.
Yes.
Good. And the weather hopefully will be good and the local church. Thank you. Appreciate your time. And best to Declan and his Eagle Scout project. Thank you. Moving on, we will now review a draft of our August 15th, 2023 Regular Board Meeting minutes. And may we have a motion, please?
I move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second. I actually, I actually had a question.
And you, all right, we'll have discussion. Well, we need a, we need a.
This is the time.
This is the time. Thank you. Okay. We will now have discussion. Thank you. Any discussion?
So in the Treasurer's Report, I know Trustee Summer had some questions that were related to us, but the way that the minutes read, it looks like she was at the meeting. So I thought maybe we should have some clarification of that.
My only comment is the, the heading says, "Trustee O'Keefe Read Trustee Summer's Report", colon.
Okay.
So I assume that means everything was below, that was her reading my report.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah, that, that works.
Okay.
That works.
Thank you.
I missed the colon when I was looking at it online. So, okay.
Trustee Senate, that will suffice then.
Good. Well, wonderful. Thank you. Any other comments or questions or concerns? All right, seeing none. May we have a, may we have a vote? Roll call. And thank you.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. And I neglected to say that we had a, the motion was, our first, the motion was with Trustee Di Lorenzo, and second, that motion by Trustee O'Keefe.
Can you hear, are the microphones on?
Yes, the speakers are not a monitor.
Oh, okay.
So we are recording, but you're not going to hear it overhead.
Okay, wonderful.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Motion passed. We'll now move on. Presentations. We'll have Andrea Vaughn Johnson, our Youth Service Manager, report on the 2023 Summer Reading Clubs and our current activities at the, in youth services. Thank you, Andrea.
Wonderful. Are you picking that up?
Welcome.
Hi, everybody. If we haven't met, welcome to the board. My name is Andrea Vaughn Johnson. I'll be celebrating five years at Wommet Public Library in this position in December. And so, yeah, I'm going to talk about how Summer Reading Club went this year and our year in general. We had a really fun and, and I think, successful Summer Reading Club this year. A lot of new families were coming in throughout the summer, and we had 626 kids join the program this year, which was 65 more than last year. We're trying to get back up to our numbers that were pre-pandemic. We saw a big drop during the pandemic, and it's been, been up and down since then, and libraries around the area have been saying the same thing, which we're counting a lot of it to, a lot of people moving to new areas, a lot of new families here who aren't aware of the program, and also a lot of that revenge travel phenomenon that's been happening the last two summers. But we are, we are recovering from that, and we did have a lot of fun. We offered 118 programs in June, July, and August that were attended by about over 40, 500 kids. We also did a lot more outreach this year to the schools and in the community. We visited seven schools in June before the end of the school year and talked to, presented to nearly every kid in the school and distributed logs to every student so that they could start participating right away. We're also doing more outreach in Kennelworth this year. We are attending more of their events. We also attended an event at Sears School this year, and we presented 42 Storytimes at the Kennelworth Hall over the summer to the preschool summer camps they have there. So a lot of activity and a lot more of us, like, out in the community. And as far as the year we had, it was, I think, a really exciting and meaningful year for us. We're doing a lot more stuff that's reaching underserved populations, we think, and one of the new initiatives that we're really proud of is the Let's Learn Together Initiative, which I know you've heard about from me before. And that consists of programs for the community, kits and a booklet to get conversations started about tough topics that parents have asked us, like, things they want to talk to their kids about. And so the focus this year was talking about racism, but we've also done workshops and other topics like Big Feelings and Gender Expression. And there's been a lot of interest from schools, particularly early child educators, for Sarah Jo, a librarian who presents these, this initiative, to present it as an in-service professional development for teachers, so, and for parents. She's doing two webinars coming up for the Alliance for Early Childhood Education on this, using picture books to talk about tough topics. And she's had other preschool teachers express interest in having her come and present this program. It's a wonderful way to showcase the collection and the books that we have and our expertise in selecting books that help a particular need. So we're excited about that. And so we'll be doing more of that. In June, we hosted in this room, I think, our first LGBTQ+ program for youth, and the families that attended reported back to us what a meaningful and really special experience it was for them. So we are excited to do more of that, more of that for those, that community who asked for that programming. We're also doing more with sensory-friendly programming, and this is programming that serves children with special needs or have sensory issues. So we've, we're doing some before pandemic, but in the last year and a half or so, we've been doing more with sensory-friendly movies. If we do a Lego program, we might do sensory-friendly Lego afterwards. And so we've been experimenting a lot with that. We did a sensory-friendly Play Cafe. So families came in, and kids are free to vocalize and, you know, do their thing, and parents feel welcomed and feel like they're understood, you know? And a lot of, you see a lot of networking happening in these programs, too, among the parents, which is really special. So we're also working with the Northern Suburbans Special Recreation Association, the NSASRA, which serves a large area, and they have adult groups and youth groups that are going to bring in groups for field trips to the library. We've done this a couple of times in years past, but we have eight visits scheduled in the next few months with the adult groups and with the youth groups. The adult groups often have interests that are in youth services. They might want books about ambulances, you know? But they, they often have a special interest that we, the youth services librarians can help them with. So we're excited about those visits. We're going to do a tour and activity when they come. And we've also been kind of auditing, like, what we do, how, how to make the library more accessible in general, and a lot of folks in my team have been working on updating our accessibility page on the website to showcase what we're doing and looking at, like, what we can do better. We've added some more supports in youth services, like weighted blanket or, like, noise-canceling headphones, other, like, sensory toys, making those available to folks who need them if they forgot to bring them in, you know, or if they want to try them out, those kinds of supports. And we also put a social story for youth and for teens on that accessibility page as well, so families can prepare before their visit for the library. And that can be really, really valuable. So we're excited about that. We added Hebrew Storytime and Cooking Program last year. We're going to do more of that this winter, and a monthly Spanish bilingual Storytime, and that's been well-attended. Um, yeah, what else? And just throughout the year, like, a lot more drop-in activities. One of the results of the community survey was they wanted just more just things to do when they come in. So now anytime you visit youth services, there's going to be, like, a voting booth out, or there's going to be a scavenger hunt, or there's going to be a decorate the bulletin board, or a stick together poster. There are always some fun, interesting thing happening that the kids can interact with when they visit the library. So I'm really, really proud of my team. They feel like they've really stepped up in doing more and maybe exhausting themselves too much, but we're all, I think they're all feeling really excited, and they have a lot, a lot planned, a lot coming up. And so thank you to the friends for sponsoring all those summer reading books. I think I said we gave away 851 books over the summer, brand-new shiny paperbacks, and thank you for your service to the library. Any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you. So many, like you say, exhausting, but wonderful, and it sounds like the response has been fabulous. Any questions from the board or any?
I had a question. On the Summer Reading Club, I noticed this year that in order to complete the journey, so to speak, that you could do some non-reading activities. Is that a new change or have, has that been used in the past?
Yeah, that's pretty new. We tried it last winter for Winter Reading Club, and we got a great response from it. And a lot of the activities will be something where it will actually boost literacy, you know, like make a recipe. You've got to, like, look at the recipe to make the recipe, or make up a game, you know? So we've gotten some great feedback about that and just have some flexibility in there, and so we want to continue with that.
My son really enjoyed it, by the way.
Oh, good. The write-in activities are so funny. I think we should share that somewhere, because there was a spot, like, make up your own activity, and some of them grew a lot of fun. I'm glad he liked it.
I just have a quick question. Do you still use volunteers where the kids can come in and talk about their? Okay.
I should have mentioned that. Thank you for reminding me. So we recruited 20 teens as volunteers over the summer to staff the Summer Reading Club booth, and they were wonderful, and some of them want to continue to volunteer with us. In fact, one of them is now helping out in the chess program, just started. She's a chess player. So I think our plan is to kind of keep, always have, like, a cohort of teens to help us out throughout the year.
I had a daughter who did that and loved it, and I think it's a great idea to kind of hook them into other volunteer opportunities, so I just.
For sure.
I didn't know if that was still running.
Yes.
I had a question, just because I don't know. When you said there were some sensory Lego programs, what is, can you just briefly describe what that is all about?
Yeah, yeah. The main difference, I think, with a Lego program rather than, like, a magic show, is that we limit registration to a smaller group of people, and by nature, it's going to be less chaotic, less noisy. So, yeah, not a huge difference between, I think, the Lego and the sensory Lego, but the smaller group does make a big difference for some people.
Nice. Wonderful. Thank you.
And maybe we'll dim the lights, you know, if somebody wants.
Sure, sure.
And then, you know, to help people feel welcome, I think, in general, that see that's something for them.
Great. Wonderful.
Anyone else?
A question, maybe you said this. Do kids like audiobooks? Do you want them, do any kids want to listen to something? Because you mentioned, they also, some kids want to do something, and then some kids want to sit and read.
They do. A lot of parents want their kids to be screen-free, so I'm not seeing a lot of use of the e-audio. But what we are seeing is a lot of demand for the PlayWays, if you're familiar. So if you're not familiar, it's a little device that you can just plug your headset into and press play. So it's screen-free technology. It's digital, but it's in a little box. There's also a new product put out by Wonder Books. So you're probably familiar with the read-along picture books that have the speaker built in. They just started publishing chapter books with the speaker built in, because there are a lot of readers who want to listen and follow along at the same time. And we got, I think, 15 or 20 of those, and they immediately checked out. So that, they just started making them, so we're going to be beefing up that collection as well, and that's really great for struggling readers.
I have one other question about the Library of Things. Do a lot of kids who have maybe sensory needs find that there's things for them? Is that used or?
That's a good question. I'm not on the Library of Things team.
Okay, okay.
I know they've been adding a lot of neat stuff to it. I'm not sure if we have, do we have anything that's specifically for sensory needs? That's something, be something interesting to look at.
Good. Thank you, Andrea, very much.
Both a pleasure.
I think some of us who don't have little ones should come upstairs more often and drop in ourselves.
We love having grown-up visitors.
Fabulous. Thanks for coming, sharing with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
All right. Next on our agenda is our Treasurer's Report, and that would be Treasurer Summer, please.
Hello.
Thank you.
As you might have noticed, we unexpectedly received some property tax revenue in August. Not sure, usually we don't get it this time of the year, but there must have been some lead taxpayers. For interest income, you will note that after two months, we already are at 40% of our budgeted item. Excellent. You also note that there's a, in the general fund, there's a CD due coming, coming due in October, and Director Austin and I have already talked about it, reinvesting this at a higher interest rate. There was a check in the amount of $8,657 to Johnson Controls Fire Protection, and that was for an annual maintenance for the fire suppression and CCTV systems. There was a check for, to Stack Map for 3415, which was an annual service to the Stack Map platform, which embeds an actual map of the library inside the library catalog to facilitate accessibility for patrons when locating items. And then the Chalet, there was two checks to Chalet for $1,479 and $2,950, and they're for July maintenance and additional ground services, including mulch, organics, and tree care during the drought. Director Austin also commented that, given the library's all-native landscape, there are very few vendors who can meet the library's gold grounds needs, such as all-electric, minimal disruption during operating hours, and skills, knowledge for maintaining the plants associated with our all-native landscape. And they've been a great resource to the library with the addition of being local. In the last paragraph of the notes, you'll note that the year-to-date loss is approximately $825,000, and that's mostly due to the fact that at this point, we've received very few property taxes. We'll get those later in the year. And lastly, even with that loss, we will see in our Finance Committee meeting, which I hope everyone can attend in October, that we will need to keep an eye on close-on spending, see this in the long-term planning, and aim at keeping all of our items at or below budget when the year ends. As I said before, at this rate, our spending is outpacing our revenue, and it's not sustainable year after year. Just my little personal comment. Does anyone have any questions on anything in the finance, the checks, notes, comments?
Okay.
Is there a motion for approval of the bills and salaries?
May we have, great. May we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the bills and salaries, check detail for August 2023 as presented.
And a second, please?
I will second that.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please? We, oh, the motion, I'm sorry, the motion has been approved by Trustee O'Keefe and seconded by Trustee Summer. And the motion was, I move to approve of the bills and salaries, check detail for August 2023 as presented. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee Di Lorenzo is yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed. We will now move on to our action items, and Dr. Austin, would you like to give us a review, please?
Yes, it's my pleasure.
Thank you.
So the first action item this evening is with relation to the Building Automation System Replacement Project and a recommendation from the staff and our vendor. As you know, we've begun discussion of the Building Automation System Project back in 2020 with the receipt of our capital reserve study that was conducted by Ingberg Anderson. And we have subsequently been adding that to our working budget beginning in fiscal year 2223. And this, tonight, is the culmination of the study that we've been doing. So this has been actually nine months in, in production to get to the stage where we are right now. Our partners at Ingberg Anderson and our engineering partners at IMAG put together the package, meeting the library's needs. The existing building automation system has outlived its utility. It no longer is able to add all the systems that we have added to the system through various renovation projects, and we're not able to utilize it to its best ability. Ingberg Anderson and IMAG helped us to design a system that would be open source and would be scalable for any future projects that we may have that would add additional systems to the library. But the overarching goal of this system is to be in alignment with our sustainability goals, to help maintain the energy and system efficiency of our buildings by allowing us to have a single diagnostic interface for all of the networked systems that are part of what it takes to run the physical plant of the library, whether it be the electrical systems, the HVAC, the snowmelt system, the exterior lighting controls, there's a number of systems that we just have not been able to have diagnostics for, and this project facilitates that. The way that this particular project went, because we were designing a system that was an open-source system that precluded certain vendors from being able to participate because they use a different proprietary software platform that would kind of tie our hands in the future. We wanted something that was going to be more open-source for us. So because of that, the bidding for this particular project was really only eligible for certain vendors who could comply with that process. So the experience that Ingberg Anderson and IMAG had allowed them to tap into the resources that they had available to them to reach out to vendors that they knew would be compliant with this. And we did that as an invitation to bid in addition to posting an open bid process on our website and through the Pro Core platform. We did a mandatory walkthrough back in August, and, I'm sorry, no, the mandatory walkthrough was on July 14th, and the bids were due on August 4th. We had multiple vendors that met with us here for the walkthrough. At the end of the day, we ultimately received just two bids. We would have liked to have three to help balance that out, but we took what we got, and that actually made our, our selection and recommendation this evening rather simple. The low bidder was substantially less, as you can see from the information provided in your packet. And after vetting that, that vendor, they were found to be a responsible bidder, and they've been in correspondence with them and various vendors that have used them for, for projects, and they're recommended to us. Because they were the low bidder and they were substantially underneath the budget that we were expecting for this project when we initially proposed it back with the fiscal year 2223 working budget, Ingberg Anderson said, hey, you know, those alternates that we proposed for this project, we recommend that you take advantage of that as well, because you're still going to be well within the budget that you've allowed for this project. So because of that, we are able to connect the snowmelt system and the exterior lighting systems to this, effectively unifying all of the building systems into the single interface. That is, in a nutshell, the summary of, of the project that we have this evening. Do you all have any questions about the Building Automation System proposal?
I'm just curious, how, about how long do they expect this to last before it would need to be replaced again?
So I think, you know, part of, again, the idea with it not being proprietary is that it's scalable. So I think as long as we're able to maintain the system updates and that we maintain the backnet for it, the, the server infrastructure, that we should be able to add any additional systems to it going forward through the maintenance program that's embedded within the service contract. The existing system, I, I can't remember how far back that one dates. Marcos, do you know how, how old that system is?
It's, it's 10 years old, 10 years of software for job service. No longer.
Yeah. I think it's reasonable to say, I mean, I was going to say 10 years is, is probably sufficient, but I think it could outlast that. The cabling obviously would be enduring, and that's a piece that we're going to get as part of this project as well.
So the original system, I'm just going to ask the question, was, the one that we kind of originally went with was the 126, right? That's kind of what we had initially thought we were doing, the 126. But the two extra ones, the 9,659, those are extras. I mean, they weren't, like, when we originally talked about this project, we didn't really necessarily envision being able to pull those in, correct?
Our aspiration all along has been to connect all of the systems. The engineers themselves thought that those were complicated systems that may or may not have the, it may not be easy to tie them back in because they are proprietary systems themselves. We won't have the same diagnostics for the snowmelt system that we would with some of the other systems. However, we will get, we will get reasonable information about the functionality and accessibility of that system by connecting it to this, by, to the system.
It's a lot extra. You know, it's 25,000 extra. The snowmelt system, we use, what, five months a year-ish? And the extra, you know, 16,000 to add the outside lights. Will we get any cost benefit from that?
For, related to our utilities, yes. Yeah, I think it's in, in alignment with our sustainability goals, and as far as the snowmelt system goes, the purpose of the snowmelt system, as you know, is to help not only to support the accessibility of the building in those winter months, but also to prevent slip-trip fall hazards. It's a, it helps to prevent the liability exposures.
I mean, we'll, we'll still have that system, whether or not we link it into the VAS system. And in addition to, to throw this out there, we paid Ingberg Anderson about 20,000, too, for their work. So the total cost of this project really is, I just want to be all in, is really 20,000 more than that.
I think, I think as we go forward with any of these special reserve projects, whether it's this one, whether it's the telephone, we do need to keep in mind what our special reserve is and be very mindful of these projects. So I think I agree with Trustee Summer that it's just important to look at the totality of this project and the totality of the cost, and make sure that that $220,000 is what we want to spend.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Other than the consultant fee, are there any implementation fees or other fees on top of the bid?
Nope, it's all, it's all built into the cost.
No, any ongoing? Like, as we do maintenance and?
The system updates?
Description, the system updates, we can pay for those?
I don't believe so, Marcos?
No.
Because it's an open source system, there's no licensing.
Well, as far as supporting, the number of the costs are supposed to be less a year, you know, the implementation is not big, but as far as the subscription cost compared to the cost of control is up there. And that's why we want an open source, just control for the money, just kind of cost is, is a team. Anything you need, please.
So, if there's a problem with this one, it's included in our fee?
For the next five years, what's going to happen as we grow into the system, as well as my technicians, you know, on staff, that we will learn the system, there are a lot of things we'll be able to take care of ourselves. Then anything that's critical, then there'll be a call, just like anything, even in a home, you need to get a specialist to come in. But as far as the functionality of the system, it will help long-term, especially for the team in case there's a problem, and it happens when the building is closed. That's where there's 24-hour access, and we'll be able to monitor and take care or come to the building as needed, even with the lighting system, if it shuts down, we won't know until overnight that there were no lights in the building. But with it being tied into the system, we will immediately know that it needs to be taken care of.
And Marcus, if may, that's the lighting system that you refer to as inside and outside?
Correct. Interior and exterior lighting.
Parking lot.
If we add the exterior lighting as the extra?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I just, we, I'm just a little background. I know at the financial, the finance committee meeting, I know with the long-term, I looked at that. So, none of you have, I mean, we've had some pre-planning meetings. So, I kind of know what the long-term, and we just have long-term effects of all of our purchases are. We just have to be very mindful of the things that we decide to do for these capital reserves, these capital projects. They can't, we can't, the money doesn't last forever. So, when we choose a project, whether it's this one or the telephone system, we have to be extremely mindful of the effect in the long-term. And, you know, when we look at the next project, you just, you have to choose. The money is a set amount, so.
I think that's well put, that we do want to be, as we always say, good stewards of our taxpayer money and, but something like this from our goals, our sustainability goals, as we've heard from Director Austin, as well as maintaining the building. But I do appreciate trustees mentioning, moving forward, it's best to prioritize and decide what is, where we have to choose. There are sometimes trade-offs. Any other questions or concerns or any other discussion?
Marcus, I have a question for Marcus. You talked about the lights. How about the snow melt system? Did you cover that as well? I couldn't quite hear how it benefits by, we benefit by linking it.
With the snow melt system being tied into the BAS, the building automation system, if we have a point where it is a deep winter freezing moment and the system shuts down and we're supposed to be open the next day, it will let me know that the snow melt is down. Otherwise, you will have an ice skating rink in front of the building. So, though we're looking at the cost, wondering why we have it, how many times will be used, it's a safety issue, more or less, and monitoring to make sure the building is safe, as well as the exterior lighting. Because to have a dark building also presents potential problem. You don't know what's going to happen or what's happening inside. So, I will be notified first. And I'll get the team, if necessary, hey, we have to go to 1242 to see what's going on. But it's mostly safety and precaution and being ready, really being able to respond than have to react to something happening. Because the key is to serve the public, and I understand the initiative of this organizations as far as serving the community on my end is to keep it safe, keep it operable, keep it functioning for staff and the public.
You know, it's a lot of pressure on you, though, like, because you're the guy, I mean, you're going to be notified, right? I mean, if something's not working, it's the weekend, or is it both you guys? I mean, I, I'm?
I'm first because I'm the closest.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'm only 10 minutes away if I drive safely. It's less. But more or less, the way it's structured as far as emergency calls?
Yeah.
The way it's designed is by proximity.
Gotcha.
By importance, who's going to respond.
So, can you just walk me through, if we were not to add the snow melt control and the external lighting and not to do these two additional add-ons, what does that look like for you? I mean, does that mean you just have to follow a separate process? Or does that mean, what specifically?
It's basically about notification. Just like Gabe, the scenario in case there's a deep freeze. And we just had eight inches of snow that's not melting on the sidewalk. That means I have potentially a four-inch block of ice on the sidewalk. And when I come in in the morning, we cannot open because it's about, now about removing that ice, finding out what happened with the system. And also, one of the things with the lighting, and I know we're looking at it financially, but from a life safety for me, as far as facilities, most of the libraries that I partner with, with organizations, this is what they have. This is just a norm for monitoring for life safety, just for the property, to make sure that they have notification, the right resources, emergency numbers to contact, like in the middle of the night, hey, can you come? Because that's important, very important, because the system, when it's down, affects so much and what's happening, or even electrical, it's like the lights went off or there's no power, I will be notified immediately. We have a generator that's going to need to be replaced, but again, it's all about notification and safety.
Oh, I have a question. So, for the exterior lights and for this, because I think somebody mentioned that the exterior lights, would you, are a little bit different system? Will there be any construction or other costs? I mean, this is not for the system to get it hooked together?
What's included in that option is from the wiring and the connecting and operating to tie into the system.
So, there won't be any additional costs of, I don't know?
Like, construction costs? If you had to go through a wall or if you had to?
No, because they're tying into the existing wiring diagram in the system, they're tying in to make it accessible electronically. So, it's all internal. As far as when this was put together, we had a large, we had a, almost a time-consuming discussion, what we need, what we want, what we have to have to move forward. This is a scalable system. So, right now, we're actually doing something that's good for now, but in the future for growth, we have the option to add later as a finances permit as far as the operating building.
So, once we have the system, we had, I think, just to confirm what you just said, so if we get, when we do this system, if we find out we can hook in, I don't know, some other system, we, because it's not proprietary, we could add that to the thing we already have?
Exactly. It makes it easier.
At relatively minimal cost because we already have the base piece.
And also too, as far as vendor selection, it's also easy with open source vendors. You don't have that one company that can only do it. You have a handful, and then you look at vetting them to see if they're consistent and they're servicing. That's what matters, and that's why a lot of organizations are going to open source, to move away from proprietary, because you're locked in.
You're locked in.
Thank you.
Good explanation. Thank you.
I'm glad I came.
Yeah, we are too. We are too. And the other thing I guess I think of is, is like insurance. This ensures that we look at all scenarios. It may happen this coming year, it may not, but we are protected, and that's why we all have insurance.
Will it affect our insurance rates? Will it help our insurance rates?
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay. Might be something to look into.
But your analogies, Marcus, are good, that it could be ice storm, climate change. We just really don't even know what is coming our way. So, I think it's a good discussion and good questions. Thank you. All right. Next is that, may we have a motion? No further discussion.
I move approval of the building automation system replacement project proposal from Interactive Building Solutions LLC in the amount of $151,800 as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. The motion before us is the building automation system replacement project proposal from Interactive Building Solutions LLC in the amount of $151,800 as presented. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Trustee Cox?
Is there any further discussion? And the motion was?
I have one question, which I didn't think about. Will there be more fees by Ingberg Anderson?
Not beyond the contract that we had with them to put together the project.
So, what we've already paid out, or is there more to be paid out?
I believe the balance of that project is complete with Ingberg Anderson, but it may be contingent upon the work that we've completed this evening.
Okay.
But whatever, whatever the board voted to approve on this project in November of last year is what we are committed to. So, that contract will be fulfilled. There will be nothing in addition to that contract that we've already approved.
That was the $20,000?
It was a portion of the project cost. So, there's nothing further from Ingberg Anderson after this.
Okay.
For this project. But they are architect, and there will be other projects I will likely work on with them.
Sure.
The motion I neglected to say was moved by Trustee Senate and seconded by Trustee Cox.
I just wanted to make one comment. I liked the discussion here tonight, even though it took nine months to come with all of this information. Sometimes as a board, we may have the information in a shorter period of time. So, I think Trustee Summer and also my perspective of just being very cognizant of the costs for these entire projects. I don't want library staff or the director or the other trustees or the public to not think that we don't want to move forward with this project or that we don't see the value in this project. We just want to keep kind of beating the drum of fiscal responsibility and knowing what we have so we can move forward. So, please don't think that we don't appreciate all the time and energy and thought that you've put into this process. We just want to make sure that we are all moving forward with the same information and with the same direction. So, I just wanted to say that to know, for us, for you to know that we appreciate all the time and effort, but we just want to make sure that we're doing right by the library and right by all of our residents. It's a great project. We just want to keep everything tight.
Because we're talking about the future.
We're talking about, we want it to, we want to be able to sustain.
Thank you.
May we have our vote, please?
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee D. Lorenzo, yes? Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Moving on to telephone system replacement project recommendations. Director Austin?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I should, I'll just close that last item by saying that with your vote tonight and with the contracts moving forward, we will expect to see completion of that project by early December this year, and we'll keep you posted. Thank you. Okay. The next project has also been in motion for quite some time. And as you know, we have a 20-year-old telephone system that has outlived its utility as well. And for the past three fiscal years, we have had this as one of our special reserve fund project goals. I've included all that history, and I believe we've talked about this at length. But if you'd like, I can certainly reiterate what's brought us to the point of where we are this evening. I'll flash forward to what's happened this year. So, we, we have our IT manager, Michael Pacernich, is here this evening, and he's really been the brainchild behind our program here this year and getting this, this project off the ground. So, he's been very instrumental in doing so much of this research and helping us with this project. So, this project really commenced this year with Michael coming on our team in the fall of '22, when we were able to apply fresh eyes to the needs that we have. Certainly with the reflection of the way that our working environment has changed since the pandemic, the flexibility of telecommunications systems has evolved an awful lot in the last 20 years, and there's a lot of opportunity that's before us here with the adoption of a new system. There's also a lot of variety for the way that we could evaluate these systems, and we didn't quite know what the right solution was going to be for us out of the gate. So, it required a lot of research. The existing system is an on-premises system, which means that the library manages that system. It requires a separate server. It has server infrastructure associated with it and all the necessary cabling and endpoints that go along with it. A new system will require that as well. However, we've also elected this time to consider a system that could live in the cloud. And we, we've analyzed both of those methodologies, and we've determined that a cloud-based IP system is really what we're looking for. That actually gave us a lot more flexibility and opened up the competitive nature of the type of solutions that could be proposed to us. So, after a lot of back and forth with a number of great, great options and vendors, we narrowed our focus down to four finalists who had the best pricing and met our needs. And we had a staff stakeholder team in August meet with those four finalists. We met with all the vendors here at the library. We arranged for endpoint testing and a proof of concept in each of these varieties to see how that system would apply for the library. And following evaluation of all of those options, we built consensus around the solution that you see before you this evening. The unique feature about the solution that's being proposed by Communications Technologies Incorporated, and I realize there are some acronyms here that are very similar, the library has a relationship with our land management firm that is CVI, Computer View Incorporated, and this company is CTI, Communications Technologies Incorporated. So, I'll be careful to enunciate when I'm saying who these companies are. The, the solution that's proposed by CTI and go-to is really a unique proposal in that this is the only solution that was proposed to us that effectively gives us the endpoints for free. So, we will basically own all of the phones with the solution that's being proposed to us here. With all the other solutions, the costs were markedly higher because we were actually paying for the equipment. It's kind of interesting. I think they're rolling the dice that they're going to provide us with such quality service that we're going to want to continue with them for the least portion of the services, which is the larger portion of this contract. As you can see in the proposal document, the expenses that are associated with the equipment, programming, and configuration is a one-time expense that's about $5,000. The real cost of the system is the ongoing maintenance for the service and the cost of the service, and that's the three-year contract total. That's approximately, say, $1,200 a month, bringing that to about $42,000 over the three-year commitment that we're talking about here. As you know, that we're already paying for telephone service currently with Comcast, and this service would replace the service that we have with Comcast. We would port all those existing numbers over, and the configuration fees, that's included in that 5,000 accounts for that portion of this. CTI is also a member of the TIPS Purchasing Cooperative, as is Wilmet Library, and that also helped to secure the government pricing and ultimately some of the discounts that are associated with the solution that they've proposed for us. There's a lot of great services that are provided by the solution, but before we really get into those details of the project, I guess I would like to turn it over to you all and hear what questions, comments you may have about the proposal that we're recommending to you this evening.
Being the nitpicker, I think it's a great one. I think this is a really good, I think, you guys know, I'm always asking a lot of questions. I think you guys did a great job on this. I do have one little question. After three years, so we're locked into that 1157 per month for three years, they can't increase it?
Except we have a rider that allows us to have an exit clause in that, so we do have that flexibility.
What about after three years? Is there some sort of, you know, are they going to get us to like?
3,000 a month.
3,000 a month, or is it something you can renegotiate at some point with them?
Well, the good news is that we will own the equipment, and our contract will have lapsed. We've only committed to three years, and at that time, we could shop around to any of the vendors that we've spoken to this year, or anyone else that we might want to vet at that time, or go back to Comcast or another phone system provider.
And we just have to then pay a monthly?
That's right. We would already own our equipment, and as I said earlier, we've owned the existing endpoints for the last 20 years, and they've served us well. We have no reason to believe that these systems are not, that these endpoints are not going to last more than at least the duration of this contract.
Just for the other, I really like the fact that we were able to kind of break it down. There's some for the special reserve, for the base piece, and then some for our monthly utility. So for budgeting, I think it's a really good, it's a great job. I think, what is the overall life expectancy of the equipment? Like, is there a range up to a certain number of years?
It hasn't really been stated, but hard phones, as these are, I think certainly can last. I mean, the ones that we have right now, like I said, 20 years on those, I don't know how long they're going to last, you know, as a device that we use on a daily basis. It is like a computer. The life expectancy of our computer systems is approximately five years, but I don't believe that these phones are going to be just a five-year solution. I think that we're going to have them for many years to come. There's certainly a different type of device than what we have currently, as they do have graphical interfaces that the current phones do not. So I guess that remains to be seen, but I don't think that it's, I don't think they have built-in obsolescence for what it's worth.
I have a question. What's the monthly service charge right now for Comcast? How does that compare?
About $800 a month.
$800 a month.
It's about $350 more a month.
$350 more per month?
Per month.
Okay. And then how, is there any improvements in like interfacing with other systems, like compute, you know, like does voicemail go to your cell phone, or is there like lots of really cool new features there?
Oh, yeah. That's the cool stuff about all of this. So that's the real excitement about this, is that it greatly is a very modern system. So during the pandemic, we couldn't really remote in. GoTo is the backend of this, and I'm sure that that's a household name for a number of people. GoTo meetings are a popular thing. This vendor is all about networking and making these solutions more modern for meetings. It also integrates with our Teams environment, which we're a Microsoft shop, I don't know. Michael, do you want to, do you want to comment on the system functionality? What do you like most about this new system?
There's so much to, can you guys hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. There's just so many different benefits we will have from this. Everything from, what you might call it, being able to use applications, whether it be like for Anthony and myself, like on our cell phone, you can actually call with the application. You'll have the library phone number. You'll have different access for cloud access for things. So things like weather-related incidents and stuff like that. We can have canned messages just set up for inclement weather and stuff like that. We can have, I mean, I'm not even sure where to begin.
Text messaging?
Oh, yeah, text messaging too. So all the phone numbers will also allow for SMS text messaging. So if we need to do two-factor authentication, like we do for our Teams, I can have just people use a library phone number, and that code is sent to their email because that will show up that way as an SMS text message. So as you move forward, like security-wise, it makes a lot of sense to be able to do that. We have like, I mean, just the different ways you can just transfer calls even, like, and I talked about before with the application, just in regards to that, you can switch between different devices. If you wanted to use a computer, you can use a computer. You can use the actual phones that we are providing, or you can use a cell phone on an application, and all of those things work with it. So it does, like Anthony said, integrate to our Teams too. Some of the functionality that would be in either the web-based or application, we can just get right from Teams. So you already have Teams on your phone. Well, you can answer a phone call. You can do a lot of that stuff just built in with it as well. So it is full integration back. If you wanted to have a meeting, let's say, for example, all the phone numbers are capable of having meetings. Not that you would want to have 150 people on a phone number, Paul, but you can.
But you can.
If you wanted to. So you want to send, have a quick, you know, like GoTo or Zoom call like that, FaceTime, like you just will be able to, be able to do that. You can send out and invite everybody, and then you're off to do. I mean, you don't have to set anything else up that's separate like that. So just a whole lot of functionality, as well as just being able to tell who's on the phone like that. For example, through the things like, it'll show that it's red, oh, someone's on the phone, they're busy, you know, something else like that. You can see, you know, like, we can actually have group rings. One of the things that we actually talked about departments is like, so for example, if someone's calling like the reference desk, well, I can have a phone number be for the reference desk that just rings these two or three handsets, and people, whoever is available can pick up, you know? So it helps in a service model like that, where we're able to do that. We can have different things if we want to, however we want to set it up, basically, is what it amounts to. I guess is what I'm getting at.
It's feature-rich. There's a lot that we can do with it. And what, the additional feature that we really like is that it has a web interface. So we're able to manage the entire system within a browser. We've got better call logging, so there's a lot of ways that we can.
Yeah, call logging too, great. There's reports and stuff like that you can see. You can see who called which number. You can see the duration of time. You can see all sorts of information like that, that it just shows perfectly in the call logs. And like seeks, for example, even someone calls a desk or tries to reach someone here, and they're not sure which department or something else they need, or they were transferred or something, you can see where that call was transferred, you know, or where it ended up, or something else like that. So if there's any time we need to trace anything else like that, we can just look it up live, basically. So, no, it's a great system.
And did the team, the users, did they all agree? Were they just amazed and kind of?
Well, all the systems are similar, so we reviewed them all. But yes, they all agreed that all of the feature sets that are presented were amazing and would be useful for the staff. And we went with this one due to just being fiscal responsible.
Thank you. And consensus?
As he looks at me.
All of us, good, good.
I think, I will say, I think the staff would agree that anything is better than the current system that we have right now, but this one certainly did stand up against the rest.
Will there be training? Is that internal training, or do they, does the company send?
We'll be conducting training, and they'll provide us with resources for that. The cool feature about this as well is that this company is going to configure all of the phones for us to our specifications, deliver them to us, and then we will be doing the installation here on site. So we can handle all of the training in-house. But they've got, they've got a whole suite of resources that we can lean on and share with the team.
Nice. Exciting. Will our patrons, I mean, the service, I mean, it sounds internally fabulous. Will patrons say, wow? Or how will, you know, will they identify that there's a new system, or just ease of transfers and so forth?
Definitely. They'll definitely know because I've talked to our, what you might call our welcome desk people, and they've had where calls drop, or calls are mistransferred, or the transfer doesn't go through and stuff like that. So that will, no. Patrons will definitely notice the quality. They should hopefully notice some sound quality difference too.
Okay.
It should be a little bit clearer too, when you're talking through this new system.
That's important.
Because it will be internet-based. So, so yeah, no, patrons will definitely notice a quality of service increase, and especially to, like, if we do have inclement weather or something else like that, just for closings and stuff like that, or anything else, because we can have automated messages set up, it's really just logging into the interface, choosing the message, and changing it right away. There's no downtime for that. So as far as that goes, like, patrons, as soon as they call, they will be informed that, oh, something happened at the library, or, oh, the library's closed because of this, or something else like that. So it'll give us a lot of more flexibility for something like that.
Great. Good. Thank you.
I have one more question. Will this link, is this the kind of system that would link to the new BAS system? Is that, was that a separate?
Very good. Well, good question.
Two separate things? Yeah. I didn't know.
Good question.
If you know, like, the system was down, BAS would tell you.
Any other questions about the phone system proposal?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Great. Great information. Thank you. May we have, seeing no other discussion, may we have a motion, please?
I move approval of the Telephone System Replacement Project Proposal from Communications Technologies, Inc., for system equipment configuration and three years of service at an account not to exceed $48,000, and accompanying switch infrastructure from Computer View, Inc., in the amount of $29,340 for a project total of $77,340 as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. The motion has been moved by Trustee De Lorenzo and seconded by Trustee Nealon. And we're ready for a roll call, please?
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee De Lorenzo, yes? Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Motion passed. Thank you.
Do we have a discussion? We just have one. The only thing I want to ask is, do we, in our motion, want to say what's allocated towards special reserve and what will be operational? Is that something we want to put in the record?
I can explain that. It is, it is in the packet, and I'm happy to provide that information. So this is, this was a two-part motion, as you can see. The first part to Communications Technologies Incorporated, and the second part to Computer View. The portion that's allocated towards Computer View is the switch infrastructure that's necessary to facilitate the system. That is the part that is special reserve-eligible, as it is capital infrastructure and an asset. The rest of the system is effectively part of the operating, save for that $5,000 for the actual hardware, is eligible. It's up to the, it's up to the board how they would like to allocate those funds. We can account for all of that within the technology budget, but we were expecting to take that out of the special reserve. It's up to you all to decide how you want to do that.
I was thinking, based on your notes here, that we would do it the way you suggested, which was 34, 134 roughly would be a special reserve. And what would be our monthly fee would go to our operating.
I agree.
Correct.
Yeah. So I just wanted to confirm that because it's not in this. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
We will, we will follow through with that then. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Summer for the clarification. We'll now move on to the Director's Report, please.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Austin?
All right. And thank you, Michael. The staff is going to be really excited. Okay. It's been an unusual month in library land. So I prepared a little bit of a statement that I'd like to read this evening. Dozens of public libraries across the Chicagoland region received a series of disruptive and ultimately non-credible bomb threats over the course of the past several weeks. Wilmet Public Library was subject to two separate incidents summarized in my report and cited in the articles that are appended to my report. In response to these incidents and threats of violence to Chicago-area public libraries, the American Library Association Executive Board released the following statement this past week. "The American Library Association, ALA, vehemently condemns the violence, threats of violence, and other acts of intimidation that are increasingly taking place in America's libraries, including the recent bomb threats to Chicago-area public libraries, putting the lives of our communities, families, and library workers in danger. Libraries are meant to be a safe haven for our communities, welcoming of people everywhere who believe in the peaceful exchange of ideas. These ongoing and rising attacks on America's libraries pose an existential threat to the cornerstone of our democracy. Libraries are committed to upholding and defending the core values of inclusion and free and equal access to ideas and information, which are essential to an informed democratic society. The freedom to read is a constitutionally protected right, and reading choices must be left to the reader, and in the case of children, their parents. Threats of physical harm and harassment are not and have never been protected speech. ALA continues to call upon community leaders and elected officials to stand with libraries and others who promote the free and democratic exchange of ideas, and to denounce those who would undermine it." The Secretary of State Alexi Giannoulis, and also our state librarian, has issued a similar statement. "As the state's librarian, I strongly condemn these threats of violence and intimidation that are unfortunately becoming all too common at libraries in Illinois and across the nation. The bomb threats received at Illinois libraries during the past several days represent a troublesome and disturbing trend that has escalated from banning books to harassing and criminalizing librarians, and now to endangering the lives of innocent people. I wholeheartedly support libraries, which are committed to serving our communities as safe, welcoming havens to learn and access ideas, and especially our librarians who are dedicated, who are dedicated public servants devoted to treating people with dignity and respect. Libraries and librarians protect our First Amendment right to free speech and our constitutional right to read. We must join together to stand up to fringe, to stand up to fringe elements that resort to threats of violence and seek to destroy the fundamental freedoms that our nation was founded upon." "Wilmet Public Library has procedures and training in place to ensure that the library remains a safe space for our community, so that staff can successfully fulfill our mission and continue to welcome everyone with collections, resources, and experiences that enrich the lives of individuals in our community, free from such malicious and disruptive threats. We're grateful for our partnership and support from the village and the Wilmet Police Department, as well as the support of our associations with ALA, ILA, and Rails, and our peers who are also managing these incidents. We're optimistic that the federal investigation of this recent pattern of incidents will bring an end to all of this." I never thought I would have to be making such a statement before you all, but the times have changed, and it's an unusual place. I'm ad-libbing now, but I'm also aware that there are politicians around the nation that are calling for burning books, criminalizing librarians. What have we come to? That's my rhetorical question. I am proud of our community. I am proud of our elected officials here at Wilmet Library, who've taken action this last year to put in a collection management policy that supports our community's freedom to read and for reinforcement of the statements that have been made by the American Library Association, ensuring those protections. While we do not know the motivation for all of these threats, there has not been a stated motivation. There is a pattern that we're seeing across all of these agencies that are being attacked. This type of intimidation is unacceptable, and Wilmet Library will not tolerate that. As I said, we do have steps in place to ensure the safety of our facility, our staff, and our community, and we will continue to promote those efforts." I will pause there. Are there any comments, questions that you wish to make as elected officials regarding those statements?
I concur with everything you said. I'm very proud of our collection policy, and just, and I'm proud of our state, you know, for the banning of, banning of book bans at the state level.
I think that Illinois is the only state that's taken this step. I'm happy to be here.
Our state librarian, Secretary of State Alexi Giannoulis, was at the Senate Judiciary Committee hearing on book banings recently and the freedom to read, and he made statements to that effect. And I was really proud to see that both he and Professor Emily Cox from UIUC spoke at that event. We are, we are well-represented in Illinois, and I think we are leaders in the nation as far as the way the public library should stand. We will keep you posted as we know more about this, and we hope that this will soon end so that we can get back to the good business of our mission.
I'd just like to say, I believe, I can speak for the board that we applaud you and staff for being prepared, calm, doing what you've been trained to do, and feel confident that this is not going to stand in the way of who we are and the community that we represent. So thank you to you and staff.
The communications that came from you and the library were clear and concise, and I think helped, as you were saying, just convey a sense of calm and readiness, and just was very much appreciated, so.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Can we move on?
Absolutely.
We got a Librator on here. All right. September is National Library Card Sign-up Month, and everyone in our community received a new newsletter, so I hope that you've all had a chance to take a look at this, and the wonderful slate of program offerings and services that we're promoting as part of the newsletter this month. You will note in my report that there is a little update to my reporting structure this time around. We've been able to condense at least a little bit of the size of my report in its narrative form by taking the program statistics out of the actual report itself and focusing more on the narrative outcomes of those programs, and taking the output measures out alongside and taking the output measures out alongside the circulation statistics and the other matters that get reported into the annual, the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, IPLAR, so that it's easier to kind of track those things side by side. So that is a little change that you're going to see in the report this month. Couple other things I can add. At your place this evening, you'll see that we do have a print piece now for our strategic plan document. This succinctly summarizes all the outcomes of the strategic plan that we adopted back in June. Sarah Beth and the communications team put together this really lovely flyer with an introduction. This is intended as an evergreen piece that we are not going to need to update through the duration of this project, or this plan, rather, in '27. It links to our strategic plan page on our website where we will update our annual initiatives as we approve those year by year. So we're excited about this. This particular version that you're holding in your hands here, however, I'm going to call this a proof version. Our color saturation on the print is not quite right. The branding is a little bit off, and we want to make sure that we're representing our brand well. So our printer is going to help us make this look a little bit prettier. So for now, you can see the exhibit, and we'll have a better version out there shortly. In the comment packet that's making its way around, there's a little piece of paper in there that patrons are going to start seeing here this week. And that is an announcement about the policy that we approved last month, which is the new Circulation Association's policy, which in effect allows patrons to designate a member of their household or a friend to be able to pick up those hold resources for them. So that advertises that, and that's the piece. And that will go in all the holds materials since that's primarily the audience that we're talking to. So Willmet residents will start to see that in their holds beginning this week. We're rolling out the promotions of that policy. So thanks again for your adoption of that last month. Also, from the circulation front, around the Labor Day holiday, the Polaris catalog was down for a couple days as CCS integrated the catalog of the Warren Newport Public Library District based in Gurnee. We're really excited to have them join the CCS Consortium as our 27th member. And they've got a really great collection, and we're thrilled to have them as part of us. The team really was resilient and rebounded well after having an offline period during our downtime. And in fact, all of the materials that were returned during that time that could not get checked in by the AMH were actually resolved within that day, that Tuesday that we came back online. And the staff were really expedient in getting the holds out, and a lot of the returns back on the shelf even within the first 24 hours. So we've got a really awesome team. Speaking of circulation as well, we issued new library cards to all of our Kenneworth residents at the end of August. As I mentioned earlier, our goal there is to try to better anticipate and serve the digital resource needs of that community. Historically, Kenneworth cardholders are issued a Willmet library card. Kenneworth residents have the ability through our partnership with the Kenneworth Public Library District and the Wenecka Northfield Public Library District, Kenneworth gets to choose who they want to get their library cards from. The majority of them have cards through the Willmet library, and they get a standard Willmet library card historically. Now, all of those cards are going to be in a sequential number, which will allow us to be able to better analyze what the usage is of that specific community so we can better serve them. So folks that didn't pick up their physical cards in the library at the end of August, we mailed them out to them. August was a really strong month for us on a circulation standpoint. In fact, it was our second highest circulation month since August of 2019. That's a really big deal, y'all. Strongest number since coming back out of the pandemic. So we're really excited about that. And I do think that summer reading owed a good part to that. As Andrea reported during her report earlier this evening, that we held several outreach events to local schools, as well as had a successful showing at the Willmet Block Party on September 9, where we had a number of staff present, and we also did, we brought the Blue Blocks over at the Park District's request, and that was a hit. Let's see, this week, tomorrow, we're preparing for an upgrade of our public computer checkout and printing software. Currently, when patrons come in, they're using our Envisionware software to check out the computers and to print. And beginning tomorrow, we're going to be upgrading that system to a new platform called My PC and Paper Cut. That software is a little bit more intuitive, gives staff better control over the backend of the system and management of the computers, and also uses less infrastructure. We won't need as many computers to operate that system. There won't be a dedicated print release station. You can release your print jobs at the new coin towers that we're getting, which also have the added benefit of accepting $10 bills, $20 bills, and now credit cards. So we're making a number of improvements for accessibility with the use of our computers. Also, speaking of coin towers, this month, we're going to be replacing all the copiers, as our copier contract was renewed this past month, as well, as I noted in the report. I will pause there and see if you have any questions about any of the other details in my report.
I had a quick question. The notary, I'm thrilled that it's so popular. Can you do a drop-in or must you make an appointment?
I don't remember the answer to that, but Kathleen is here. Kathleen, do you know the answer to that?
Currently, we have four appointments.
Okay.
But the demand is so strong that we are already talking about perhaps having another staff member be authorized, be trained, and then they can be able to, you know.
Drop-in. Can you usually make same-day appointments?
Currently, it's just for the day before, just for scheduling purposes, but again, that's just as we roll it out.
Yeah.
And on that.
I just noticed there was a comment on some thing that I was, someone was looking for a notary. And they mentioned the library, but then someone did comment, oh, you can't do it same day, even with an appointment. So it'd be nice if we had that available. Great.
I was going to say, we just have, right now, the one notary, and he has days off.
Absolutely.
But to your point, Kathleen, thank you of possibly adding someone else.
Anyone else?
Okay, I'll ask another one. When, at the very end, where you list all the stats, and particularly, I think, as you know, I'm such a numbers nerd, but at the very end where you list a lot of the services, and I really appreciate that they're kind of highlighted in red and which ones are... What point does the staff evaluate, and is it annually, like as it comes due, they'll look at this sheet and say, okay, we've highlighted as a red one, it's too expensive, it's not used? Is that...
Right. So trustee Summer is referring to the Digital Resources document that is compiled by Digital Maker Services manager Lauren Kelly. So they've got, they put together this report that has the cost per use. Obviously, the ones that are shown in green, we're getting a great value on those. The ones in red are showing, you know, a higher cost per use because they're not tracking as much. We're at the beginning of the fiscal year, so over time, we're going to see these numbers start to even out. The ones that don't obviously are going to be eligible for replacement, or we'll find a different solution, or just cancel that service based upon its non-use. But I will say that one of the things that we are going to focus a bit more on this year is to promote these resources. There's a wealth of value that's embedded in a lot of these. But that said, if some of them are not communicating an immediate value back to the public, I'm sure that there will be other resources that could replace them that would be of use. So early in the fiscal year, too early to tell. Most of these contracts began with the fiscal year on July 1, so we probably have some of these things for the next 12 months, but yeah.
So towards the end of the year, they'll continue to look.
It's an ongoing study. Yep.
Tell her it's great. I think it's a great eyeball.
It's a good system, right.
I'll let them know.
I liked how you added, just as a reminder, who is the manager for each team, and it's nice to...
Good catch. That's also in addition to this month's report.
Name. To identify and adult and teen services. Kathleen, thank you. Marcus, you know, we see et cetera, on and on. And I think that helps us connect, make those connections. That nice addition. Thank you. Pictures are nice, too. Anyone else?
Director Austin, I think I had read somewhere that in connection with the bomb threats, that we decided to disable the, is it Moseo system?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. So yes, it's true. The chat service is a service that we have suspended indefinitely right now. The majority of the agencies over the course of the past several weeks that received these non-credible bomb threat hoaxes came through what is effectively an anonymous means, which is the chat service. Most of those threats were probably done through a proxy that was originating in Europe. I won't get into the details about it. Obviously, that's part of that federal investigation. It makes it very hard to trace what the origin of those are. The chat service was used, but it was one of our less well-used methods for patrons to connect with us. We're evaluating whether that's something we would do continuity of. I think in the fallout of this, we're going to wait a good while before we resume that service. As it stands, I would say it's not a mission-critical service in terms of what we're providing for our patrons. You can still connect with us via the phone, in person, via email, via other means, social media. There's other ways to connect with the library. It is a means of convenience. It's more immediate, but it does rely upon us being here during open hours. For the time being, we feel that this is the appropriate thing, and all of the peers who had the same chat service, where they received the threats, have also discontinued the use of those platforms as well at this time. We'll study it. We'd love to provide that service to our community, and it's unfortunate that a single person could cause us to have to change that service. But we're hoping over time, we'll be able to bring that or something like it back.
Does the new telephone service have any capabilities like that?
Not like that, no. But good question.
Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Moving on, we have our committee reports, ILA and Rails. Trustee Nealon, anything to report?
Do not have anything.
Okay, thank you. And Rails? Director Austin?
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you. The Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee update, trustee Nealon?
The meeting has been changed again and is noted to October 25.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
October 25 is the next meeting.
Okay.
So it's delayed another month.
Is that one where you'd like another person to go with you?
Yes.
I would like to go.
Sounds good. We had talked about having trustees attend as they are interested and able, instead of having, you know, set.
Designated, right. So we might all take a turn as we're interested or available.
And I don't have to always go either, like two, you know, two different people can go.
Well, that's an option then. So is that an agreement that we all might take a turn?
Sure.
Good. Okay. Thank you. But the information does go to you? From the committee?
Yes.
Yes, so...
Coordinate whatever needs to be coordinated.
Okay, you'll take that.
Report.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. The suggestion box information has been circulated, thank you. And just our information that we have our, I think trustee Summer mentioned that, thank you, but I'll just reiterate that. We have our Finance Committee meeting that will be for a levy to discuss that on Thursday, October 5, 10 o'clock in our small meeting room next door. And ILA conference, annual conference, anything, Director Austin, you speak to that, or...
Just in Springfield this year, so downstate.
October 24 through 26. Okay, thank you. And there we go. All right. Well, moving on to our next agenda item and that we will now discuss in a closed session, and may we have a...
Do we have new business?
I just would like to mention, there's a virtual event Thursday night at 8 o'clock, and it's something that is a result of a grant that we received. And it's because it's virtual, it's, I just saw it today, it's about a Yiddish, the oldest or the first Yiddish library. Anthony, can you correct me what it is? It looks fascinating. So I would encourage, it's virtual, you can sit at home in your pajamas, eat your popcorn. It's as a result of receiving, I think, with the grant that we got, so.
Yep.
It's in the newsletter?
It's in the newsletter, on page three of the newsletter, the Stories of Exile section here. This is the grant project that was brought to our attention by trustee O'Keefe, thank you. And that was applied for by Adult Services Assistant Manager Rachel Garcia. Stories of Exile is part of the Yiddish Book Center, and actually, the program tomorrow night is a virtual tour of the Yiddish Book Center. Registration is required for this event. That's how we get the link to you for this. So if you go onto our website in our events, you can see more information about it and obviously link to it through the newsletter.
And feel free to share it.
Yeah, I'd like to add, I've actually visited the Yiddish Book Center, and it is fascinating. The story of how it was put together, that story in and of itself is one of those incredible stories. So it is well worth visiting virtually, if not in person.
There were also a number of us who went to the Friends Thank You Luncheon. And just to comment on that, that was really lovely. So thank you to them for extending that to the trustees.
Slightly chillier than expected, but lovely.
They're doing wonderful fundraising for Maui.
Yes.
Libraries in Maui. It's fantastic.
Thank you for sharing that. Wonderful. All right, now, we have, at this point, we have a motion that we are going to move into a closed session. And may, would I have a, anyone like to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the board go into closed meeting to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees in compliance with 5 ILCS 120/21 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, the motion has been moved by trustee O'Keefe and seconded by trustee Summer. And we will now take a roll call, please.
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee De Lorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes, thank you. We will now note that it is 8 o'clock, and we will, 8 o'clock PM. And we will now, the board will take a break and convene next door for our closed session. We will re... All right, so we will reconvene to our open meeting, and we will note the time is 9...
18.
Thank you, PM. And we will have a roll call, please, to reconvene.
Yes.
Our meeting, our open meeting.
Yes, here.
Trustee Nealon?
Here.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Here.
Trustee Fishman?
Here.
Trustee Summer?
Here.
Trustee De Lorenzo, here. Trustee Senate?
Here.
Cox?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay, thank you. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, the Board of Trustees in our closed meeting recommends that we approve and congratulate Director Austin for, you're well done. And we move forward that we will have a 5.7% increase in your salary to $155,500. And maybe I have a motion to accept the recommendation of the Board of Trustees that we discussed in the closed meeting.
I move to accept the recommendation of the Board of Trustees in closed meeting.
May I have a second, please?
I second.
Thank you. And there, the motion to accept the recommendation of the Board of Trustees has been moved by Trustee Summer and seconded by Trustee Cox. May we have any other, any discussion? Or may we have a roll call, please?
Maybe just a thank you for this past year on behalf of the Board of Trustees, and we look forward to the next year working with them.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to serve.
Thank you. May we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cox?
Yes.
Trustee DeLorenzo, yes. Trustee Nealon?
Yes.
Trustee O'Keefe?
Yes.
Trustee Senate?
Yes.
Trustee Summer?
Yes.
Trustee Fishman?
Yes. Am I correct there? But, all right. Now, we are ready to adjourn at 9:21, and may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting at 9:21.
Thank you. Trustee Nealon?
I'll second.
And second is not necessary, but thank you anyway, and we, a voice or vote, and all those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.